Okay, the time is 5:09. This is February 5th, 2021. The joint meeting of the Southampton Local School Committee with the Southampton Board of Health, and I will call the Southampton School Committee to order, and I see that we have four Julians here. We have a full quorum, or all committee members of the Southampton School Committee are present. Becky is Chair of the Board of Health. Do you have a quorum to call to order?
I do not. We only have two members present. We only have Kate and myself. Charlie could not make it tonight, and Jerry is unable to come as well. So we have just Kate and myself.
Is Jerry a member of the board, or is it just you?
Just her actor, but she was going to be in here for support for us.
Okay.
Potentially, that is a matter of having quorum, then. You can gavel in if you want.
Okay, so two of the three Board of Health members are present. I don't anticipate any votes happening tonight, but we'll continue and we'll take things up as they come along if need be. First item on the agenda is the ongoing weekly review of the COVID-19 data and circumstances for possible change in the learning module. Superintendent Sullivan, your input on the week's data?
Sure. If you'd share, let me share your screen. I could throw up this week's table, or I could just summarize it.
I think you can share.
All right. I'm not seeing that. It's not letting me. But so I'll just describe things. It's another positive week for the county and for the state, and also for the smaller towns in our district. COVID cases declined, test positivity rates declined. And after two improving weeks for Southampton, there was a bit of an increase. Statistically, not very much. There was, we went from 29 cases in the prior two-week period up to 33 this two-week period. The, let's see, the average daily incident rate went from 34.7 up to 39.2 for this latest two-week period, and the percent positive test rate was 4.6 a week ago, and the two-week rate today stands at 5.1. So about the same, slightly worse for Southampton. And as I mentioned, for the county, things consider moving still in a really good direction with 10% fewer cases, and for the state, 17, almost 18% fewer cases than in the prior two weeks.
And Superintendent Sullivan, are you recommending any change in course for the school committee at this point in time, or no?
No, I would recommend that our learning model stay the same for next week.
Okay, thank you. And also, because I was late, I didn't mention this, but this meeting is being recorded for the purpose of production of minutes, and because this is a joint session with the Board of Health, this meeting will be broadcast later on on the Community Access Channel. And Superintendent Sullivan, you're sharing your screen right now?
Yeah, very quickly, my simple line graph to show. This is Southampton's cases over time. You can see the big spike following the holidays, then the nice decline for two weeks, and then this is where we are here. And these are the other districts in our group, and then that's Hampshire County. You can see continuing that decline. So that's it.
Thank you. Also, for the record, Principal Pluta is excused tonight. She had a prior commitment that she communicated to the committee ahead of time, so we will not hear from her tonight. Stephanie, do you have any input that you want to share with the committee?
Yeah, sure. I'll give just a quick rundown of cases at schools throughout the district, and then some Norris-specific information. So last Friday, we learned of a positive case in the New Hingham School community. That individual was in the school building during their infectious period, and we identified nine close contacts. Our report went out this morning, four of those individuals had tested negative. But my most recent update from Connie this evening is that we are all, I'm sorry, seven have been cleared, and one has decided not to test. So the individual that is not testing will need to stay in quarantine for 10 days, sort of assuming they remain asymptomatic and would be released at day 11. So assuming everything goes well over the weekend, the positive case and all nine close contacts should be cleared to return to school on Monday. So Connie will follow up with all of those families or staff members on Sunday, and then connect with Jesse and myself. Williamsburg has had no further cases in the school community since January 19th. West Hampton has had no further cases in the school community since January 12th. We did learn of one confirmed positive case at Hampshire Regional that was communicated yesterday. This individual is in the remote population, so has not been in the school building. That said, we learned today that this individual did gather with some other members of the school community outside of the school setting. So we have been in contact with those that were identified, and we'll certainly keep people updated if things change related to that case. In terms of Norris, we, earlier this week, Eliza communicated about a positive case. This individual had already been deemed a close contact, so they were quarantined during their infectious period. This individual was a close contact to the case we had previously communicated about on January 11th, but it's important to note that these individuals live in the same household. So they were not able to isolate within their home, and it is transmission happened at home and not within the school building. As of this afternoon, that positive case that Eliza communicated about earlier this week is still awaiting clearance from isolation. That is the only case that we have in isolation. We have eight close contacts that are quarantined. These were all individuals that were exposed to somebody outside of school, so close contacts not exposed at school, and currently zero staff out related to COVID.
I have a question for a second, if I can interrupt for a moment. Stephanie, do you have any idea what's unique about Southampton that's causing ours, you know, in cases to increase when the rest of the county, and average, and our other surrounding communities in Hampshire County are still going down?
You know, it's really hard to say. You know, I think some of these cases have been related to gatherings. You know, I think many people are being safe and doing the right things, but unfortunately, not all are taking appropriate safety measures all the time, and, you know, are continuing to gather with people outside of their households without masks and without physical distancing. And I think, you know, there still is a fair amount of transmission within the household happening as well. You know, parents are exposed at work, and then, you know, their kids are exposed at home.
Yeah, I would say the household exposure is completely understandable, but if this is being caused by, you know, consistent and ongoing outside gatherings that way, I guess my question to the Board of Health is, what are we doing to communicate that to the public to get a higher level of compliance so that we can get our kids back to school?
Well, Greg, I think that question's posed to the Board of Health, and I think the next item is an open dialogue between us and the Board of Health.
I will more than happily hold off, and I'm sorry, but that was appropriate when we were talking.
That's okay. I just don't want Stephanie to have to answer for the Board of Health.
Not a problem.
All right. And Stephanie, just to close the loop, are you recommending that we take a change in action or course of action over the next week based on what we're currently doing, based on data that you see right now?
No, I think we can move forward in our current learning model.
Thank you. And I know Principal Pluta, because of prior commitments, is not available, but Superintendent Sullivan, did Principal Pluta communicate to you that she thinks we should take a different course of action over the next week? And you're muted right now, Michael.
We met this morning, Stephanie and Eliza and I, knowing she wouldn't be able to make it this afternoon, and no, she would like to continue with this model and did not see issues with reduced staffing, for example, in the week ahead.
And that was going to be my follow-up question. Are there any staffing issues that would, whether COVID-related or not, that would cause us to have to take pause? And it sounds like there is not.
Correct.
Okay. And I don't have a child in second grade, so I'm not sure of the timeline. Have we started the four days a week for second grade, or is that this upcoming week? Is that too much of a question?
[laughing]
I think it starts this Monday.
Yeah, we should get, Monday after vacation is when it's going to start. Yeah, the snow days threw off the whole sequence, I think.
Gotcha.
Thank you to whoever just put that in the chat.
So as far as committee member, or school committee members, for the previous week going into the next week specifically related, are there any questions on that before we go to the next item, which opens up the dialogue with the Board of Health? No? Okay. Next item is discussion of coordination with the Board of Health, and I will yield the floor to Becky and Caitlin.
Kate.
Caitlin?
Just Kate.
Kate, just Kate.
Just Kate.
And Kate.
How are you guys? Thank you for having us on tonight. Greg, to answer your question as far as what the Board of Health is doing to help keep community members following the rules, it's a very hard question to answer. You can't, you can't make somebody follow the rules. The protocols are out there, the CDC, the Board of Health. I'm not even sure if you could get through an entire show without the state of Massachusetts putting something on TV saying that, keep your distance, wash your hands, be safe. So if people, they know they need to stay away. They know that they need to limit gatherings. I think we're at a point right now where everybody is just so burnt out from COVID and the restrictions that they're starting to open up their circles a little bit more.
Frankly, that horrifies me. I mean, I would think that having communication from you as local authority is going to carry a lot more weight with the members of our community than anything we're going to get about the state-level government, which, to be honest with you, I don't particularly trust. And I think a lot of this, I would think like a mailing, any sort of, you know, email you could say, putting, you know, a little small advertisement on our community television programming that we have, even putting some Facebook posts out there. There's just some, you know, some ideas that I have that, you know, so if we completely, I think, blast the community with, you know, the reason that we need to do this to get our kids back to school, I think we can get a better level of compliance. But it's got to come from a position of authority, and I think that you guys should be driving that, to be honest with you.
So when I spoke to Stephanie during our meeting, I was under the understanding that a letter was sent out to the school communities, especially through the holiday times, requesting compliance. And so I thought that that message had been communicated, and I, you know, I will say that we can post on Facebook, we can, we don't really have an email list that goes out to the general community, but I mean, if you think a Facebook post is going to make the difference, we can certainly put a post on Facebook. I just feel like there has been consistent messaging throughout the pandemic, and people are going to continue to make their own choices. The other thing that, to acknowledge is that some of this transmission could be happening also in the work setting, right? And people are still going to work and bringing COVID-19 home into their households from work, which is not something that even the Southampton community has full control over. So if people are working outside of Southampton and coming back into Southampton, that could also be a risk for transmission that we're not going to have control of within our community. I mean, there's, I'd say, a fair majority of people who don't work in Southampton that live in Southampton.
Oh, yeah, I'm one of those people myself. And, you know, I understand that, you know, workplace transmission and household transmission are, you know, completely beyond our control. So it's really, you know, Stephanie mentioned earlier that it was specifically outside gatherings, even among students, that was, you know, the source of some of these transmissions. I mean, that's what I think that we should try and do. And to be honest with you, not everybody consumes their information or media in the same way. I think that what we need is in all, all methods, all vectors we can possibly get, method of communicating this out to the public. I really think that people, if they knew that this is one of the things that's keeping their kids out of going to school full-time, might seriously reconsider their actions. I'm hoping that we have a good audience right now. We can broadcast that message out from those who are attending here, and they'll pass it on to their friends. But I think we should use every possible method we can to get that message out to everybody. It's that level of compliance that will let our kids go back.
I agree with that. I think that's part of what we're talking about in this meeting today, is are there ways that we could outreach to people differently? I mean, that's one of the things that Stephanie and I talked about, was how to phrase to families, you know, about what their responsibilities are in the community that contribute to the decisions that are made within the schools, you know? And we're certainly welcome to suggestions. I mean, you folks have the, probably the greatest methods of communicating directly to students through your email list, through your, you know, phone list, through the school itself. You know, we're kind of on the periphery, and I highly doubt that students are really going to, I mean, they might say, yes, I'd love to follow the Board of Health, you know, singular Facebook post, or, you know, multiple Facebook posts, but I just, I'm not sure if that's going to be the only, you know, the most successful way of hammering that message home.
Right. I hear what you're saying, but I... Greg, if I could for a moment?
Yes, please.
I just, you know, as Chair of the committee, I want to acknowledge the fact that the committee truly appreciates the fact of the Board of Health, that Becky and Caitlin, you know, joined us tonight, and I see this as a positive momentum to move forward. And hopefully, collectively, we speak as one voice going forward. And I welcome that, because while as a school committee member, we're only responsible for 482 children in the community, the Board of Health is responsible for all the citizens of Southampton, and we play a minor part, and we want to support you guys. And the fact that we're here tonight, collectively, speaking together as the elected officials of both the school committee and the Board of Health, is a very positive sign in an open setting. And so I welcome the dialogue back and forth, and I truly believe that collectively, the, tonight, the seven of us, and I understand that Charlie cannot be here and that, so it would be the eight of us, that moving forward, we speak as one voice, and that we go forward as a team.
Thank you for saying that.
Agreed. So anyway, I was going to say, you know, I'm not a, you know, marketing or PR-type individual, but there must be somebody among our community here that's going to know the best way to get the message out. I mean, the Select Board also, I'd like to ask, you know, you're, you know, the leaders of our community, and all our elected leaders, what way do you think that we can best get the message out? I can see that I have Matt Rowland on here, but if we can perhaps invite him into the conversation as a Select Board member, I'd like to see if he has any suggestions for, you know, getting this information out.
I think the posts that, I think Caitlin, you've been, or Kate, you've been putting those posts up that alert everybody in the community about the vaccine appointments. So that has been awesome. I've been really excited to see that on the community board. And I know not everybody's on the Southampton Community Board, but I was like so pumped to see that type of messaging was awesome. You know, I think this is about trying to promote a community within Southampton that's following the recommendations. Like, we're going to be a community together that's working together to promote social distancing and mask-wearing and really adhering to it. And like, once the, and it's, you know, once one family's really doing it, it spreads to another family. So it just kind of promoting that idea of like, we're following the guidelines so that we can keep the kids in school, because if we can get the community transmission levels down, we can get all the kids back in. And, you know, other communities, you know, maybe like Northampton, Amherst, they may have like a different kind of, they seem to have a little bit tighter numbers percentage-wise. Maybe they have more adherence. You know, some, certain communities are like real strict on their mask wear. And I think if we can try to communicate and promote that idea, and I agree with Greg, all avenues, because not everybody looks in their snail mail. Not everybody's on Facebook. You know, there's a bulletin board in the center of town. Can we get something up on there, right? Like, let's use that board and put it up there. Like, let's be a community that wears our masks to get the kids back into school. You know, that's the kind of messaging that we, as a community, should promote and try to be as good as we can to get the kids in. So, you know, that's my thoughts.
So...
Noah, you can leave your doggone mic.
I think, I think this is all positive and great, and I just want to keep the meeting moving forward. So I think we move into item subsection one, the review of the proposed, quote, "Southampton COVID-19 Case Management Agreement" that Stephanie on our behalf had initially put forward to the Board of Health, and I know that Stephanie and Caitlin have been working on that. I'm not sure which one of you two may want to report out on that first, as an update, understanding that nothing has been formalized yet, but this is more of a update.
So I was wondering if maybe I could remark on, you know, just to give an update about the content of what we discussed during our meeting, and then I thought, Stephanie, you, since you, you know, played a large role in developing the protocol of kind of who was responsible for who, I thought that one thing might be able to lead into the other, if that's okay with you. So I just wanted to do a quick review of our meeting that we had, I believe that was the Sunday before last, and talk about some of the challenges that we've identified and working together, discuss what's been working well, and discuss what we think are areas that we should focus on together to really help to improve communication and make sure that we're doing everything we can to try to, you know, keep chains of communication open and work together to, like Julianne said, you know, really do whatever we can to get the kids back in school. So we discussed the current state, and as we know, our positivity rate has been decreasing. I mean, from 13%, down to 5% is a big improvement, and we know that that's directly related to the holiday season and numbers decreasing. In fact, there's been a number of communities around us that have all seen significant decreases in positivity rates, which is another positive thing. We know that a primary source of transmission is household transmission. We know that there are statewide challenges with the contact tracing process, where cases are being traced seven to nine days after initial positive results. And we know that the Community Tracing Collaborative is completely overloaded with too many cases, and we know that that poses challenges for our local community, especially, especially when case clusters are sometimes being delegated or referred to the CTC, because the CTC, you know, is being handled at the state level and doesn't necessarily act with a specific regard to our local community. And so they don't know to reach out to Stephanie and have a direct dialogue with her about, you know, the case and who that person was really close with. And in fact, the CTC, if there's one phone call made and that person doesn't answer their phone, then they move on. They reprioritize that to a low priority, and then that person gets lost in translation, lost in the shuffle. And so say there's a phone number that's incorrect for that person, there's a chance that someone in our community may never hear somebody, hear from somebody at the Community Tracing Collaborative. So we know that that's a big risk, especially if there's an influx of cases. We do know that there's a really strong school nurse participation in the contact tracing process within the schools, and we know that that's one of our biggest assets and tools in keeping our community safe, because the school nurses are really working hard to identify cases as they're happening and communicating them to the Board of Health. And I know that there's been some direct dialogue between the school nurses and Sharon to make sure that we're keeping those chains of communication open. It's really, one other thing that's going well is that we're really using the available information between, you know, seating charts and between information from teachers, using that information to properly identify close contacts and assist with contact tracing efforts. And we know that families are generally responsible for keeping their children at home, right? So these are all things that I think are really positive, and it's, it's really going to make a big difference in our, in our case rates going forward. We also identified that there are several areas that we should be focusing on as the Board of Health and with our contact tracers in order to improve things and improve communication. And I do think that communication here, like John said, is one of our best assets and tools to help keep our community safe. So we really decided that it's important for us to focus on fluid communication between school, Board of Health, families, and contact tracers. And if we think that something's not going right, I mean, we've extended our phone numbers to several school committee members, saying if something's not right, to reach out in a timely manner. If you don't feel like you're getting the information that you need, not waiting to hear back and reaching out and saying, this isn't right, and we need to make this better. Because, you know, for us, we heard about some problems that are concerns that were brought forward several weeks to a month later. And unfortunately, at that point, it's really hard to backtrack and effectively troubleshoot what actually happened. And, you know, at that point, people are frustrated, and they feel like their concerns aren't being addressed, which is something that we really need to work on. We need to make sure that we're sending strong messages from the Board of Health and the school to encourage appropriate social behaviors, just as we were just talking about. And I do think you're right, taking any possible communication avenue and encouraging families to communicate positive results or close contact exposures as they happen, because we know that sometimes families aren't disclosing information to the Board of Health or aren't disclosing information to the school, which obviously poses a huge risk to our school community. And so, you know, of course, we need to encourage people that if you have a possible exposure, to communicate that to the school and to be responsible. And if your child has had a close contact, to make sure that you're letting the school know, so that you're not potentially exposing other people in the school to COVID-19. We also know that because the CTC is so overloaded, we need to do whatever we can to minimize cases being referred to the CTC, which is something that really is going to be more feasible when our case numbers are much more manageable. So our case, I saw the number of cases have gone down significantly, and not overwhelming the current contact tracing system is going to be a big tool in helping us to maintain open communication. The other area of opportunity is that we really want to make sure that the Board of Health is providing consistent notification of quarantine and isolation periods, because we want to make sure that kids, when they are isolated, are being returned to school as quickly as possible. And especially as we open up to, or in the future, when we open up to more in-person learning, it's really important that we are providing you with the letters saying that children can return back to school in a timely manner. And I know, Stephanie, you've been reaching out about that as well. I do want to just highlight a few variables that created some communication challenges or some issues previously that are not within the control of the school or the Board of Health, that, you know, I really feel like these variables can help create weaknesses in our current system. So families not communicating test results and having children go to school prior to information being available in Maven, we know that that's a weakness, right? If we have a positive case and the information's not in Maven, and Stephanie doesn't have that information, or a school nurse does not have that information, we know that that's a risk, right? But that's a risk that's not within our control. We know that historically, there's been challenges where information about isolation and quarantine periods are being provided from other people than the Board of Health, which is incredibly confusing. So I know that there was an example where an outside local vendor was telling people they needed to quarantine, and it caused a lot of confusion. And I think the result of that was that the school nurses were getting flooded by a bunch of phone calls from, from community members who were told to quarantine from somebody who actually didn't have the authority to quarantine. And what that caused was a bunch of stress on the school nurses, because, you know, they're getting an influx of phone calls that were surprising to them, which is not fair to the school nurses. Really, we should be directing that and maintaining that open dialogue with the school nurses. We also know that there's been a lack of response from families when contacted by contact tracers. So people have a right to not be responsive to contact tracers, or they give limited information. So say, a family refuses to provide close contacts, of course, that interferes with our ability to safely identify who should, should be staying home from school. And this limit... And this limited information also can lead to the risk of exposure. So it's really important for families to answer calls from contact tracers and make sure that you're giving appropriate information. And we know that sometimes a child might not be able to tell, um, or an adolescent might not appropriately identify who their close contacts were. Which of course is not within the control of the school or the Board of Health. Statewide, there are issues with the CTC or entries in Maven causing delays in contact tracing. So it's equally as important for families to be notifying the school, um, if there's, if there's positive cases or exposures. And often Stephanie said that families are calling ahead of time and letting us know, but even before. Cases are available in Maven. And I did speak to Sharon because Stephanie had a question of whether or not we could effectively expedite a case being. Put into Maven, so say a case, um, we get a positive result in the school, Stephanie gets a phone call from a family member. But it's not in Maven, so we can't initiate the contact tracing process. Sharon said that she will call the state lab to get that result expedited through Maven. So that that way we can initiate the contact tracing process sooner. And so I'm hopeful that that tool will allow for us to, to make sure that we're, we're, you know, completing the documentation needed. For contact tracing in a timely manner. The other things that we noticed were not within our control is transmission outside of schools. Cases in Hampshire Regional High School are from multiple communities, which can make contact tracing and communication more tra- uh, more challenging. So for instance, uh, one classroom might have students in it from three different communities and those, um. Each will have different contact tracers, so there might be many different people, um, handling cases from the same classroom. Which can cause gaps in communication, and we also don't have jurisdiction for Hampshire Regional High School. I just also want to acknowledge that teachers, um. And I, I hope that we are always taking this into consideration with our decisions about remote or in-person learning. And, um, teachers are phase two for vaccine administration, which is not within our control. And I know that there's been a huge amount of advocacy from the school community about, um, about this challenge. But we know that, you know, teachers, um, even though students might not be a higher risk, we know that some teachers may fall into a higher risk category. And so, you know, students might not be being vaccinated, but you know, teachers certainly may not be vaccinated until March or April, right? So that makes it really challenging to say that it's a hundred percent safe to have in-person learning. The other challenge that we, we noticed is that each entity, so school, the Board of Health and the community. Have very different priorities and a different scope, and I know John mentioned that, um. We, the, the, John, um, said that the school is really focused on the four hundred and eighty or so students in the community. But the Board of Health is focused on the broader health of the community. And you may have a different perspective on what's most important. Which of course makes problem solving a little bit more difficult, and of course, you're going to find that your school community is the most important. Um, and I, you know, that does make it challenging to make decisions, and I know that we're going to talk about a community tracer for, um. The school of Southampton, but, um, in a, in a future time. But we all have different attitudes and perspectives towards COVID nineteen in general. And I feel like all of those variables do make effective decision-making and, um. Case tracing a little bit more challenging. Um, I know that the other thing that we spoke about during our meeting was the availability of testing. And I know that West Hampton was the school that decided to pursue pooled testing. But not having information within the school about possible cases. Also limits the available information that we have to, to make decisions and, um. So that's, you know, again, a variable, that decision was made, you know, outside of the Board of Health and, and, um. May affect the number of cases in the schools going forward. So for case tracing. We talked about what triggers a case to go to the Community Tracing Collaborative and how can this, how can this be avoided? So I spoke to Sharon about this specifically because this was a huge area that caused some concerns previously. And, um, I think that having open communication between Stephanie and Sharon is really going to be the best tool that we have. To prevent cases from going to the CTC. And so, you know, anytime that there's a case that's coming up, Sharon encouraged her to call anytime. So that that way we can get that process started, um, as soon as possible. And Sharon said that no matter what, a case cannot just fall off. So if there's an appropriate phone number and address in for somebody, uh, a case can't just not be traced. So, um, one thing that can cause a delay is if there's an incomplete or incorrect address or phone number. But, you know, if Stephanie knows of a positive case, we can get that information corrected at the state level. To make sure that we're, we're doing what we need to do to case trace effectively. And I'm hoping that with, you know, the multiple, with the open communication and acknowledgement. That not everything is within the control of the school or Board of Health, that it will help us to, you know, really. Promote good communication and also limit the risk of, um. Cases not being effectively contact traced in Southampton. I don't know, Stephanie, did that cover?
You did a really great job summing it up. You know, I think one of the biggest things for us that came out of it is just. I guess Sharon's willingness to, um, when, because we are the majority of the time, I think, learning about. Cases and close contacts before she is. So just being willing to take that positive result and, and information from us. And get in touch with the state to make sure she can access it in Maven quickly and not having to wait, you know. Three plus days for it to actually pop into the system. I think for us, that is, is really huge and, um, I also just wanted to, you know. I am much more, um, kind of on the periphery of this and, you know, I, I communicate with Sharon a lot more on evenings and weekends. But just want to kind of give credit where it's deserved to our school nurses, Tracy Dale and Joanne Duggan. Who are really taking on a tremendous amount of case management and, um, doing a fabulous job. And, you know, I think. We've really, um. I see multiple emails every day, um, between them and Sharon. I mean, the, the communication is constant. I think one area where we would maybe like to talk to, to Sharon and the Board of Health. About how could we streamline it more is maybe, um, you know, because it feels like we're inundating her. Six, seven times a day with a new email, because, you know, as the minutes pass, we learn of a new close contact. Or a, a new situation that needs following up. And would it be beneficial for us to have some kind of routine check-in and maybe. You know, it's once a week and if there's not much going on, it's fifteen minutes. If there's a lot of cases to connect about, it's an hour. You know, just a, a thought to have kind of like a more regular scheduled check-in and those emails and phone calls are still going to have to happen. But it might be less time consuming and, and more of an efficient, direct way to communicate. Another thought I had that, um. I guess I can't take credit for it, Northampton Board of Health and their school nurses, um, created a, a shared. Basically like a Google Doc that they're all on. So it's their school nurses, their contact tracer and, um, their public health director. And that way that, you know, even if they're not able to respond to that email right away or make the phone call. They might have a minute to quickly update the spreadsheet and just in, you know, real time have. Constant communication with one another. So those are just some other ideas, you know, between when you and I met and now, um, that we've kind of thought of might. Help just improve our communication and follow up with families in the community even more.
And Sharon really said that it was helpful to, instead of trying to, you know, talk to the family and get information about their close contacts. To encourage the school nurses, really just to direct those calls from the family to Sharon. Because, um, I think it expedites the, starting the contact tracing process. But also make sure that Sharon is aware of everything that's happening, which I think is part of, you know, Sharon doesn't know what's happening. She can't effectively do case tracing, um, so I, I hope that that's been going okay from your perspective.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, um, there have been multiple instances where, you know, someone has notified us. There are close contact and, um, you know, Sharon doesn't have that information yet. So we've been, you know, more careful with our narrative and not issuing quarantine guidance. But more kind of pointing them in the direction of here is the state guidance and, you know, the Board of Health will ultimately be the one to. Determine if you are a close contact and, you know, what, what steps you need to take and when you are cleared from, from quarantine. And then just giving them Sharon's contact information directly. But also giving Sharon their information to kind of ensure they connect.
And I think it's great that we have that opportunity to be able to provide that level of specific contact, right? Like with the fact that we have the ability to provide a contact tracer's phone number instead of always, like, instead of always waiting for that information to come into Maven. I think that's, um, you know, probably above and beyond what many communities are, have access to. And so I think that's a great asset and, um, you know, as long as we control the overall number of cases, we should be able to keep up with that. And, um, you know, I, I really hope that that open dialogue will really make a difference. And, and, you know, your perception of how the contact tracing process is going as well.
And I think, if I can interject for a second, I, I think there. Any committee member can disagree with me, but I think from our point of view. Stacy, correct, or Tracy? The contact tracer.
Sharon?
Sh- Sharon, alright, I was way off. Sharon is absolutely the point of contact, she is the, the head of the division. And, um, she reports to Geraldine, who reports to the Board of Health, correct? Right, so I think from the school committee's point of view, or at least the committee's point of view, we don't want to interfere with that. But we have three highly competent registered nurses and a school physician that all work, work for the schools that we pay. And if we can somehow figure out a way that their knowledge and their expertise can flow through Sharon. And Sharon al- always has to be made aware of everything that's going on. But that they have some latitude to react to it, as long as I agree they're communicating, because this is a Board of Health area. On what the contact tracer does. That if and when we ever hit an issue like we did in the middle of December, where there was just this like tsunami. Of contact tracing coming in. Again, I'm only speaking for myself, but I think I speak for the whole committee. We're more than willing to allocate the resources that we have, the medical professionals that we have limited. Be that the three RNs and the school physician. To support the Board of Health, to, to make sure that everything happens and, and that we do it under your guidance. To make everything go, everything happen. And I guess I'm not asking you guys publicly to agree to that, I just throw it out there. That, you know, I think Stephanie is class A, I, I, I think our school nurses are class A, they go above and beyond. And there truly are, while I will say our teachers are doing a hundred and twenty percent. I think our medical staff on, on payroll are doing a hundred and thirty percent. You know, if I can give them more credit than our teachers, and I know that will hurt me in an election, but, you know, they're, they're definitely going above and beyond. So however you guys feel that you can utilize them to best support your organization and your contact tracer. I know that, um, you know, Sharon has another full-time job and, and she's, you know, she's contracted with the city of, or the town of Southampton. At X amount of dollars and if you translate that over thirty days a week and how much it comes down to fifty dollars a day. That's really twenty-five dollars an hour and two hours a day. I get it, and I'm sure she's doing ten hours worth of work a day, I know she's going above and beyond, I don't want. My comments on behalf of the, the committee to, to minimize anything that she's doing. How can we support? A mutual department of the town to make sure everything goes good. And, and again, understanding my focus, our focus is on the four hundred and some odd kids we have in our staff. And you guys have a bigger focus, but, you know, what can we do to help you? And, and I think that's kind of, and I think your conversation has already gotten to this in our subsection B of. Consideration of an additional tracer. And I, I, I think I shared with you guys the job description that Northampton put out, I'm, I'm not so sure that we can afford. Thirty-five dollars an hour at twenty hours a week on, on the school budget. I know you guys are limited and restricted in the funds you have, we certainly are, but, you know, is there a middle ground that we can find? Are you guys even open to it, you know, to accepting? Our offer of support? You know, understanding that it's completely within your realm. You know, the school committee does not want to be the leader in, in the Board of Health charge. I mean, it's, it's your jurisdiction, it's your area, we just want to help where we can. So that if and when we ever hit another tsunami, we're not having to shut down because of a lack of tracing. As we saw in December. If that makes sense.
I think that makes sense, we have discussed it, um, you know, we've put the feelers out there as far as our committee goes. And, um, it's going to be on the next meeting's agenda to kind of look into that a little bit further. We did take a look at the, um, Northampton job aid that had been sent out regarding what they posted. So. There are a couple of challenges we face, um, if and when, it's kind of hard to hire somebody on the notion of if and when. I thought Kate and Stephanie really did a fantastic job at, um, identifying a lot of the challenges and problems that the contact tracer did face. Um, when Caitlin had mentioned that the, um, contact tracing, the people who did not get contacted. Don't necessarily fall through the cracks, because it always goes to somebody. During that tsunami that happens of, um, cases, the state did hire an additional two thousand contact tracers at that time. So there was an influx of tracers to help with that, unfortunately, just everybody got hit with it. So, um, that being said, we will put that on the next agenda and we'll discuss, um, further actions as far as the contact tracer.
Perfect, thank you. So for purposes of the agenda. And I don't want to cut anybody off, if, if anybody wants to talk about, uh. Additional on the discussion of coordination with the Board of Health. I just, I, I believe that we have made tremendous progress in the past thirty days. I mean, the, the fact that we're having a joint meeting and that I am, on behalf of the school committee, I'm serving as liaison to the Board of Health. And on their meetings and, and Caitlin is serving as liaison to the school committee. I think that our communication has improved a thousand percent. Um, and that we're all on the same page. Um, or at least working in the same direction and understand we may disagree on things, but that's all part of the process. And as long as we do it in a public and open forum, we're good. So if there is no objection. Well, um, knowing that the Board of Health is going to talk about the consideration of additional tracer. At their next Board of Health regular scheduled meeting, I will leave that alone and we can move to the next agenda item.
Ask when their next regular scheduled Board of Health meeting is?
Okay, it's not posted yet, do you get, do you guys have a regular, like the third Wednesday of every month or no? It's up in there?
Becky, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm so sorry, I know that everybody's working a lot, um, my job does not offer consistent scheduling. And I know that a lot of the meetings and non-consistent meetings, I will take full responsibility for. I don't have the third of every Wednesday off, I went through three scheduling changes just recently within a past month. It's just unfortunately, my schedule doesn't allow for that. So we, we post it two weeks in advance and we talk about it, we are due for one coming up towards the end of the month. And we try and usually just develop it to one point of the month, um, the only month that we typically skip or have trouble with is December. Because of all the holidays at the end of the month, um, and Charlie usually take, um, takes a long vacation. So that's usually the only month that we kind of have a problem with scheduling. So, um, we're looking probably within, um, if today's only the fifth. I'd say probably, we're looking at about two weeks away at this point.
So I, I would say the Board of Health is anticipated to meet before March first?
Yeah, absolutely.
Superintendent Sullivan, I saw your hand first, does that answer?
That was my question to know when that consideration would occur.
Okay, and Stephanie, then I saw your hand.
Yeah, similar, was going to ask just when and kind of let you know that, um, this week I spoke to Lisa Safron. this week I spoke to Lisa Safron, who's the Director of Health and Safety for North Hampton Public Schools, just to get some info from her on, you know, what prompted them to make this move and what agreement they've worked out with the Board of Health. So, um, I won't make everybody listen to that right now, but I'm happy to either connect with you, Kate, um, at some point beforehand or attend the meeting and kind of share what I've, I've learned as well.
I think it would probably make sense for you maybe to, for you to attend the meeting just so that that way you could give us that information. I think that would be really helpful.
Sounds good.
Okay. Uh, so the next item on the agenda is under new business. And this is the article that was referenced at our last regular scheduled meeting, and I forget the date off the top of my head. But, um, the subject of the article, which is available on town website, if anybody wanted to read it, "Data and Policy to Guide Opening School Safety Safely to Limit the Spread of SARS/COVID-2 Infections", written by or authored by Margaret Hurein, PhD, Lisa Barrows, Doctor of PH, and John Broke, MD, published January 26, 2021. And this is an item that Committee Member Bennett brought forward, um, at the last meeting. And we delayed discussion on it to allow members of the community to reference the material. And if there is no objection, um, from Becky, I'm just going to recognize Board of Health officials as I would the school committee members. So if at any point in time either one of you wants to weigh in, I'm, I'm happy to recognize you during the discussion.
Thank you.
Committee Member Bennett?
Well, um, to start off the discussion, yeah, I just want to say that having read this article, not just the review there, but the actual JAMA article, it seemed to me that there are a lot of factors that are now changed significantly since the six-foot rule was enacted. And I'm not saying I'm in favor of, you know, repealing the six-foot rule, but I'd like to see what sort of data-driven science we can get, learn from this that we can do to apply towards making our decision a little more objective and less subjective. And I'd like to open up the floor to all the other fellow members just to hear what their thoughts are on it. Juliana, I'm particularly targeting you because you're our resident health expert who has probably a much better understanding of the nuances of the article than I do. So, um, you gave us a little bit of information on last time, but if we can start with you, I think that might be a great, if you don't mind.
Right, right. So, thank you. I, we read the article and you know, the take-home message that I got, it goes through and it talks about ways to safely reopen school. Have to do with limiting the transmission outside of the school. Specifically, it talks about, you know, working to decrease, uh, eating inside restaurants was one thing it talks about. You know, that would be a significant contributor to, uh, transmission is limiting in-person dining. So that's one thing that article speaks to. But a lot of it says, uh, to, it talks about a couple of classrooms where there were significant transmission events. And in those classrooms, social distancing wasn't exactly happening. The cla- the classes were more crowded and mask wearing, I think in one classroom was, was good, but I think in another classroom wasn't as adhered to. So it really talks about making sure the density of the classrooms are, you know, addressed so that you're not having dense, you want to decrease the density of the classrooms, which is what we're doing by putting in a six-foot rule is it's de-densifying the classroom and spreading everybody out. And that's one of the big mitigation strategies that, that you reach when you can have a six-foot rule in place. It talks about, you know, adhering to mask wearing, making sure ventilation is correct. One of the classrooms that had an outbreak was they had recirculating air conditioning and that caused transmission. So making sure that you don't have the recirculating air and we installed, um, the filters. So I think that addresses a huge issue. So that's good. Uh, I'm not even sure if we have air conditioning, but you want to make sure it's, you know, not circulating, uh, because that was one of the big identifiers for one of the big, big transmission risks within one of the classrooms. So I don't, you know, I, what I see in that article is what we're doing is the right thing by layering all these mitigation efforts on top of each other. And it's the layering of those mitigation efforts that gives you good outcomes to decrease transmission. So there's not just one single mitigation effort that works. It's the layering of all these different mitigation efforts. So it, you know, I think making sure masks are effective masks. You know, they have to be multiple layered masks, pleated, you know, pleated masks work better than non-pleated. Certain materials work better than other materials. Surgical masks work the, the best if you can't get an N95. So, and making sure you're not wearing a wet mask, like these are all, that's one thing. Making sure you have the right kind of mask that you're distancing and not having crowding in a classroom, that we have good ventilation. So that's, you know, that, the article really spoke to additional measures outside the classroom, which I think is promoting that community idea of following and not having inside, in-home gatherings without masks or with non-household members, not eating inside restaurants. Because that's a, a transmission red flag. And then, you know, I think, I don't, I don't see anything that says that we can lift a four and a half, you know, go down to three to five, three to four and a half feet in that article. It says to make sure that you don't have a dense classroom. So spread people out is really important. And I think it's important because right now we're getting into this, you know, the variant, which is, it's common, it's common viruses mutate and this one has, and that's expected. And there's a couple of different variants and the data is still coming. We're still learning information, um, on the fly here. And I think it's projected that the British variant may be the predominant variant next month is what I'm reading. So we have to, I think, still stay strong with our mitigation efforts. And it's, we're not in a place right now to decrease any of them, is my understanding of that article.
Right. And if, if I could just add that, um, one of the things that I thought the intent of tonight's agenda item was not necessarily to change the course of action as of Monday morning, but to start the conversation. If we were, or I, I wouldn't say if, when we are going to drop down from the six-foot, because eventually it's going to happen, whether it's next year, whether it's two years, three years or 10 years out. We, we're going to go back to the way things were before the pandemic, to start the communication dialogue now, so it wouldn't be a surprise. So I, I completely agree or understand everything that's been said so far. But I, I think for the, the purposes of the public that's listening tonight, this is more about, at least from my point of view, as, as a voting member, when, when we decide to revert from the six-foot rule that we have set in place and that wall that we put up, what are the parameters that will, at least in my mind, get me to change my vote to say, okay, if we've met these thresholds, we can go back to the five-foot, the four-foot, the three-foot, the six inches that it was when I went to school some decades ago. And I want to, and, and at least from my point of view, I want to start that dialogue now and, and try not to surprise anybody. Because the one thing I'm very proud of the committee is that since really July, we have been at the forefront of communication. And we're going to, if we're going to make a change, let's talk about it. Let's debate this in an open and public session and get all the input that we can and make our decision. I, you know, you know, perhaps, I'm not going to do it, but perhaps someone may or may not make a motion to, to make a change tonight effective Monday morning. I don't know that. Um, maybe it's a week from Monday, but as a group of five, let's start talking about this. I also, um, while, while I am talking about this, I want to just, for purposes of transparency, the committee did receive a correspondence today, this morning, at 11 o'clock this morning, from, um, our superintendent. So I just want to admit it to the record that as of today, um, which I agree with, the superintendent is not recommending a move from the six-foot rule, any reference from CDC. So I just want to admit that to the record. But I honestly think tonight's agenda is more about when and if, not if, when and when we do reduce the six-foot rule, whether it's a week from today or two weeks from today, what is that parameter so we can start communicating out to our parents on what we're going to do? So just for purposes of the record, I just want to admit the email communication from the superintendent in his position that as of today, under these circumstances, he's not recommending a change immediately. To be fair, his communication does not say that we should not look to reduce the six-foot rule. It's just that, uh, paraphrasing and Superintendent Sullivan, feel free to correct me. I think based on the fact that, that this week's data did not show a continual, continuation decline, that there's a pause and wait and let's take another week or so, don't make a change as of Monday. But that he's not opposed to reducing the six-foot rule. It's just, it basically, don't do it today for Monday morning and see how things go. Am I paraphrasing?
No, I think, John, you, you've done a great job. My thought always was what we're going to do at this point is we're now, we're going to define what the environment's going to look like when we do returns, like you said. So it doesn't catch anybody off surprise, by surprise at all.
I agree, Greg, but I just want to make sure Superintendent Sullivan, did I paraphrase you correctly or no?
Uh, yes. And, and it was co-authored with Stephanie. So, and, uh, what we had to say sounded a lot like what Julian had to say. Part of, uh, an important piece isn't just the weekly data, but the, also the, you know, what we may see with this strong British variant and letting that play out a little bit too. So, yeah, thank you, John.
No problem. But, but I do agree with other committee members that we need, we do need to start strategizing and setting the roadmap for how we go to the four-foot, the three-foot, the two-foot rule. Even if we can't achieve it, what, what are we looking for, for guidance? We, we need to be able, I feel, we need to be able to communicate to our parents of what, what is going to have to happen to get us to say, we'll go to the four-foot. And to go to the extreme, perhaps it's 100% vaccination. And I know that's not possible and within the next 365 days. But you know, what is it? We, we, and, and I believe in communication and, and starting this dialogue and how we go. So I will stop and leave it to the, the rest of the committee members to jump in or the Board of Health to continue the discussion.
I think a lot of people assumed too that we meant like, all right, Monday, let's try to get us back. And I don't think in any way that, that would be the case right now. I'm obviously Ben, a big push, pusher person to get us back in and to, to bend the six-foot rule a little bit. But I would like to see that happen when we're out of red. I mean, we're, we are still in red as of right now. I was hoping this week we'd at least be bumped down to yellow, but we're not. But I would like to foresee, I wanted this discussion to happen because I think that we really need to start talking about when we can get them in. I, I don't feel that waiting till next school year is the right move. I feel like our school has gone above and beyond compared to other districts about what we've done to fix the air ventilation, the filters we've put in, putting in eye waves in each classroom, the water bottle stations, the hands sanitizing stations, things like that. I think that compared to some other districts I've looked into, we've gone above and beyond. And I do feel that once we are out of red, we should start talking about the six feet. But I do also agree with putting like desk shields, um, on the ones that can't meet the six feet.
Yeah. If there's any sort of mask exemptions too, like I think desks, if we're going to lower, follow the CDC guidelines that actually specifically says, and Michael highlighted it all for us, that it does include endorsing those shields between, between desks. Um, I think getting really like our community transmission numbers suppressed much lower than where they are right now, like firmly out of the red and we have to see what's going to happen with this British variant. If the infection rate starts increasing and we see that this more infective strain is, is taking over, then we're going to see cases go up and we'll see the R-value go up. So we kind of have to see what's going to happen. There has been, I was reading about, because I'm from the South Shore, so I get updated on what's happening in, in Hanover, which is right near where I grew up. They are, they have, they're a much bigger town. They're a pretty big town. And they have, I think within their town, the ability to test their own community members. So they have their in-town testing. They also have in-town vaccines, um, which is really impressive. So they have in-town testing that they are now testing the school with. So they're able to coordinate and do this pooled testing. And now they're there, which I think kind of is surprising because I think there's more cases there. But they're surprisingly going down to four, three to four and a half feet for desks in the classroom, except for lunch, they go to six feet is what I'm reading. And I think it's a little premature to do that. But then when I look at what mitigation efforts, they've added additional mitigation there. They have this infrastructure already in place that Southampton does not have for testing their community members. So they're kind of teaming up and working together and using that to get their school tested. Where before we had the meeting about pooled testing and, you know, adding that additional layer of mitigation, which if we could have put into place, it was just, you know, it's, it sounds like it's free, but it's really not free because it's the, the cost of trying to, to run that whole program is a no, another FTE nursing, um, staff at least. So, so they already have the infrastructure already in place. So these bigger towns that might be going down to three to four and a half feet, you have to look at, well, what do they have in place in that community already? And they already have the infrastructure in place to, to get the pooled testing up and running. They have another, they kind of outsource it to another group in town. And, and you know, I think unfortunately we just can't do that in our small town. But I think we need to keep layering the mitigation level strategies that we can do right now and then see what happens. Once we suppress levels down, I, you know, then I would feel more comfortable if we have barely, you know, we're back to really low testing rates. I think that's a big thing. If we get to really low testing rates, if we have a higher percentage of, you know, some of the teachers ha- probably have risk factors that place them into this next group that's going to get tested. So 75 plus is going next and then it's going to be people with comorbidities. So certainly that's going to pull in some of our staff, um, because there's teachers with asthma and you know, health problems that they're going to get tested, they're going to get vaccinated. So some staff is going to get vaccinated in the next group and then the healthy teachers after that. So we're getting there. We won't have kids test, kids vaccinated anytime soon, um, unfortunately. But at least the staff, I think, is right around the corner here. But I think there's a lot, we need to get the numbers down lower, I think, before we can. We need to look, we needed to look pretty suppressed.
Right. And we also made a conscious decision not to purchase the plexiglass to separate the desk because that required additional manpower on the, on our janitorial staff to do the deep cleaning. Because once we put the, once we put the dividers on the desk, right? Then they had to be cleaned during the deep clean cycle every night. Sorry. And we made the decision not to do that. So I'm not expecting an answer tonight, but one of my follow-up questions would be, is if we did do that, if we did do the individual desk shields, what additional burden, for lack of a better word, would that put upon our, our budget? You know, we only have our part-time COVID custodian. Actually, I, I'm not even sure that position is still, now that we're in February, that position is still funded. I know we continue to fund it through January. So I, I would, from a budgetary point of view, I'd, I'd want to know what the impact of that would be to put the desk shields on every single desk in every classroom? And, um, what impact that would be, whether, you know, regardless of whether we could do it or not, what's the dollar amount? And then could we find room within the budget would be one question because, um...
I know as a parent, I would be willing to, I mean, you can go on Amazon right now and you can buy the individual desk plastic barriers that are like 20 something dollars. I'm pretty sure that the parents that are fighting for kids to get back would be willing to. But that is something we'd absolutely have to look into. I completely agree. But I think, go ahead.
And it's more of them being cleaned every night, right? Because now you have 482 desks or even cut it in half with cohort A and cohort B. And I know we get smaller because only three through six are there. But it, it does become a multiple, right? You know, even if it's 200 desk with the shields and if they have to be sprayed and cleaned every night, is that the equivalent of an FTE custodian? When we only have two and a half right now, we added in a half, we added eight half, um, for the pandemic. But I'm pretty sure, and I don't want to put the superintendent on the spot and I know Elisa was excused for tonight, but I'm pretty sure the half position expired on, on January 30th. and I don't want to put the superintendent on the spot, and I know Eliza was excused for tonight, but I'm pretty sure the half position expired on, on January 30th. Now the funding, they, they may have continued it and, and you know, I don't wanna speak to that, but I would want that information, you know, before, before we say, oh yeah, if we put the shields up, we can bring everybody back. And you know.
I wouldn't rely on just the shield either, but I have been closely following uh, um, just about all of Massachusetts as much as I can. And there are many schools that have already been back at the three-foot rule, cause they've been following the DESI guidelines. And I think a lot of parents like, there's no schools around here, but there, there is. Even Connecticut has been open and some of the schools, definitely not all, are open at three feet because they follow DESI guidelines. I think that we've gone above and beyond following other.
Well.
Can we get special?
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I was gonna say, if you read the full um, guidance from the CDC on reopening schools, they're, they never demand six feet. They say three is six, they demand three, but they never say absolutely six. They say that your risk is related to the mitigation strategies that you employ. So they're not saying that going down to three feet is good. They're just saying that there's a trade-off there and that has to be weighed against the factors. I think that the, you know, the mass chapter of the American Academy of Pediatrics was a little more aggressive with going after that and saying like, we see the balance of education and, and mitigating the spread of the virus is something that we would weigh more heavily towards decreasing the distancing. So I just wanted to throw that out there as number one, that we're not, the CDC isn't saying we demand six feet. They're saying six feet is optimal, uh, 12 feet is more optimal. Yeah, 12 feet is more optimal, like if we could get 26 feet, you know, to just knock the, the um, people that are talking about the fully aerosolized stuff out, that would be awesome. But you know, I think to John's point, uh, at some point, we're going back to the six-inch rule. So I think it's, I do appreciate the way that the agenda item was phrased, cause it's a little bit of clickbait. Cause you can notice our attendance is way up tonight, whereas the other night, no one wanted to talk to us, um, even though we had a juicy public comment spot that no one took. So I enjoyed that, but I think that, yeah, we have to talk about what it would look like when we do that. I would like to see out of the red for a stable amount of time, so not like teetering on going back into the red. Because the DESI guidance does say like when you're in the yellow, you could move it up to more full in-person learning. But we also don't wanna have to keep going back and forth between models, because that's labor-intensive and and emotionally intensive. We've heard from some of our teachers about, you know, going back and forth. And you know, when the risk increases, we also, the biggest thing is for me are the internal metrics. So I don't wanna put us in a position where we're knocking out too many staff. And that's the thing that forces us, um, that forces us to go remote again. So I'm always gonna look at those and say, okay, what can we do about that? So I don't want my next comment to be a referendum on anything, cause I think everyone's trying. But I think it would be awesome if we could get more N95 masks for the staff. Even if it was KN95, um, I also looked those up on Amazon, they're available with Prime shipping. So I don't know if it's like a purchase order thing that we can't just like buy direct from Amazon or whatever. But I would love to see that, um, you know, in the conversation at least, if, you know, we can do it. I think that might even be more effective, um, cost and mitigation wise than the desk shields might be. Cause I've been following a couple of people out of the Harvard School of Public Health and they were saying, you know, one of them was very bold and said, if we all wear uh, N95, we can kill it in two weeks. I think that that's a little bit uh, optimistic. But I think that there's something to that, like if we could get our hands on more N95s, um, especially for staff. I think that would be great, because the, what the data is saying now, we don't have a full picture, because we're not testing everybody. We would have a fuller picture if we could. But what the data is saying now is the biggest risk for transmission in the school is coming from the staff, which is interesting. Because the staff have expressed a lot of apprehension and, and fear about being there. But actually, you know, if we're gonna be afraid, it might come more from that direction. It's, it's like we were having a discussion before, um, it's people that are working in other environments and getting it from family members in their home. But there's, there hasn't been good evidence of transmission, um, you know, within many of the schools around here, including Norris. So, um, you know, I think if we could uh, come up with some mitigation strategies to address the staff, then that might help to prevent the uh, in-school transmission. But those are the two things that I'm looking at is, you know, how can we keep the most staff people available? And um, how can we also limit in-school transmission, which has been, you know, we've pulled a really good number there, so.
Cool.
If I could just top on with. Comment.
Alright.
The one thing I'll say is if, if PPE is an issue, I mean, there's definitely other sources of N95 masks, even if it's not Amazon for, from vendors that can provide tax, tax exemptions. Or you know, if that's an issue, I know, uh, I'm, I could provide you with uh, several vendors that are able to supply that. I will say that exposure, regardless of the type of mask or PPE that you're wearing, no matter what, is still, the CDC definition remains that within a six-foot distance, you're still would be considered a close contact. So even if you're wearing an N95 mask, it still would not prevent people from being quarantined if they are exposed. And it also doesn't protect people's eyes, right? So wearing an N95 mask itself is only one small layer of protection. Where, you know, at work, they really to truly protect staff, you have to wear face shields or some sort of eye protection in order to real, I mean, like wearing an N95 mask is one, one strategy to prevent transmission, but you're still considered exposed. So say teachers are wearing N95 masks and they're around, around students who do test positive, they still will need to quarantine. And so I think, um, I think that does make it more challenging to determine, you know, even if you have those desk guards in place, right? Those teachers are still at risk for being quarantined. And I think that that, um, that definition is never going to change, right? So that CDC definition for contact tracing will always be six feet. And so I think, you know, maybe that weighs into our discussion about the contact tracer is because if, if you start putting students at less than a six-foot distance, then you're risking an increase in demand for cases to be traced, right? So I feel like, um, that should be part of our discussion about whether or not it's feasible to add in contact tracing at, um, support. Because you know, you end up having one case in a school where the students are only placed four feet apart in multiple classroom settings. You could significantly increase the number of quarantined staff and residents, um, just by reducing that distance.
Those are really good points. Thank you.
If I can go for a second, uh, everybody's had some great ideas here, but some of the things that I'd like to be looking at too for potential consideration before we return are, you know, what the community vaccination rate is amongst all members of the, the town, as well as what the teacher vaccination rate is and what the, specifically the teacher vaccination risk rate is among the high-risk group. I mean, if we can help isolate the fact that, you know, the high-risk teachers might get the vaccine first, then that sort of eliminates any risk from them, you know, contracting the disease for the most part, down to that 95% immunity it gets that way. Um, I also think that's great, you know, someone said earlier today, I'm not sure exactly when, about, you know, some of the best, best practices for masks. I mean, some of those things I hadn't heard either, so I think that's a perfect example of the way that we can beef up our auxiliary mitigation measures among the community to sort of help, you know, decrease the potential of transmission that way. And also, this is a question for Mr. Sullivan in particular. Can you find out with, through your superintendent groups, what other, what the percentage is or what other schools are actually below six feet in the Commonwealth? I'm curious to see how, the, how prevalent that practice is.
Yeah, I did that about two months ago, if you remember, and there were, were hardly any, if any, um, so.
I wonder if it's changing.
How she, where, how she found that out. But I can put it out on the list, sir, but I don't believe DESI keeps that information public or has that information.
Cool, and this is just to the Board of Health in general, do you guys track what the level of vaccination is amongst the, the entire town?
I believe that those numbers are gonna be tracked at the state level and not at the community level, because, um, people are like, there's no way to track it just within the town of Southampton. But that data is reported through the state and the state ha, uh, will be reporting regularly on, um, population vaccine percentages. I don't know if there's currently data available at, right at this point, but I know it's in discussion at the state level.
I would definitely think having more granular information, knowing how it is specifically in our community can make a more focused decision for us. That's why I was asking.
I think they're still in the process of developing, um, in, how they're going to disseminate information, uh, you know, about many different things. But I know that they're talking about having that information available at mass.gov.
Thank you.
And Greg, I would just add without, without divulging uh, which hospital association it is. I do sit on the board of directors for one of the local hospitals and of the medical staff, only 34% of them opted to take the vaccine.
Wow.
And I would say that the mass, I don't wanna say the mass, the majority of the objections were because of their age group and child bearers. So while I agree with you, we need to know that number, I think it, we can't rely solely on that number.
I mean, I think that's just one more piece of the puzzle. I just wanna know as much data as possible, but that's good to put in that context.
That I agree 100%. It's, it's, it's another data fact.
Exactly.
But it doesn't necessarily keep someone from, well, it doesn't keep someone from contracting and/or transmitting the virus. So even if we do have a full, you know, uh, vaccination rate among staff, it doesn't necessarily, like they could have someone at home that's unvaccinated. You know what I mean? Like it, it's not necessarily gonna stop the onslaught of cases.
Right, and I, um, I certainly wanna continue the open dialogue, but uh, the time is 6:30. So while I think we're kind of covering all the subjects on the new business, I want to make sure that we cover item B. If we haven't already specifically, these are the two enhancements to the current COVID-19 mitigation plans that would potentially increase security and safety of the school committee. Subsection one, provide testing, either pooled samples or rapid agitant tests specifically focused on teachers and staff. And subsection two, increased mass efficiency specifically focused on teachers and staff. And um, a committee member asked to put this on, I think this is a follow-up from a, a collective joint session that we had. And in that joint session, only West Hampton decided to move forward with the uh, pool testing. But I just want to make sure we cover everything on agenda, so I'm just gonna throw it out there for open discussion on those two items. So we, we can keep moving forward if any committee member wants to jump in.
Sure. I would just say that I was definitely in favor of um, antigen pool testing until I found out how much it costs us, both in terms of actual money and the amount of support that we would need from our staff on that. So, you know, if money were raining from the sky, I'd say, let's go for it, but it just was too financially, you know, unrealistic for us to adopt that option.
And, and I think just for the record, I, I think the Norris, am I, my memory is fading, potentially fading me if I'm wrong Superintendent Sullivan. But was Norris's total about $82,000 before it included the Hampshire regional piece? Does that sound about right?
Yeah, seven, eight, eight, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's what, I think, I believe that's close to what the calculation was, yep.
And a staff member.
Plus a staff member too.
Yes.
Yeah, it wasn't cheap.
Yeah, no, I just wanted out there for the public record.
Exactly, yeah, I mean, we wanted to do it, it's just that it wasn't feasible.
Right.
Yeah, so this, I asked to have this added just so that we can, cause there was three of us at that meeting and it, you know, then we got an additional follow-up correspondence that I think was forwarded to us from maybe Williamsburg, just um, talking about the variants and the variants coming into our community. Um, additional mitigation efforts that could potentially help. And it's, it's what Austin talked about, about the, you know, one of the greatest risks are, are actually probably the staff. So one, if we can't test the whole community, but is there a place for revisiting pool testing for just the staff? Um, and if one of the communities is already doing testing, can you tap into that resource to just do our staff only? And is that something that we'd wanna revisit or think about? It's a huge expense in undertaking to do the program with every kid. But for staff testing once a week, it would be an additional layer if we think this variant could be posing an additional risk to our staff. And then, yeah, so that was one topic. The second part, we've kind of talked about with the masks and increasing the efficacy of our mask wearing specifically for our staff. I think Eliza did order additional N95s. Uh, I would be in favor of having in the budget additional even surgical masks for staff to wear instead of their home cloth masks, because they're more effective than wearing home cloth masks. So right now, if we see this variant influxing into our group, can we offer to our teachers the surgical masks uh, to wear instead of the home masks? So is that something that we could budget for?
So I wanted to ask a question, cause I wasn't able to be at the joint meeting. So either Julianne or whoever may know the answer. So I had read that, um, people that previously had 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 COVID could test positive months after they were, they were actually, you know, infectious or whatever, you know, the terminology. So you know, one of my concerns was, um, are we then gonna lose staff uh, or students to quarantine and have to shut down because we're getting more, I mean, sometimes more data, you know, uh, causes other issues. And so is that a potential issue that we would lose the in-person learning just because we're picking up cases that are months old? That doesn't convey active infection.
It was discussed that we would probably catch people that were no longer infectious, but didn't realize that they were positive to begin with. Or ones that had had previous infection, we shouldn't be retesting somebody within, I think it's three months, is that right, Stephanie? Is it three months that you don't retest anyone, because they're gonna just be positive, but they're outside, they're infectious, right? You're not gonna do anything differently. So you don't wanna retest that group. But anybody that maybe didn't realize that they had the sniffles a month ago and it was COVID, but they're not infectious anymore and they were really not very symptomatic, might trigger a quarantine. But you don't know, cause it could, or are you catching them? The other flip side is, are you catching them early and you don't know? And they, they don't know if they're infectious, it's, it's hard. So initial testing, the first two weeks, you're probably gonna catch a bunch of people, it's happening right now at UMass Amherst, all the undergrads are back, their numbers are spiking. So, cause they're doing pooled testing. So is it, I think the, the easy, one of the easy things to do is to give the staff better masks, um, surgical masks to wear. Uh, and then to really encourage to switch out masks if they're wet for the kiddos. Like make sure that any wet mask, my kids do this all day long, they suck on their mask, like switching those ones out. And then also making sure that they have the good two, two-plus layer masks, that if someone is having, we have a supply that, oh, this mask, you know, this mask will work better than your single-layer Lycra mask, because those ones aren't not very effective. Just making sure people are wearing effective masks in the building.
So, um, in your thinking, were you thinking about double masking at all?
No, I don't think double masking, I just think making sure the masks that people are wearing are effective ones and trying to really encourage that. And then for our teachers and staff to see if we can offer them surgical masks. Cause they work a lot better than the, the homemade ones. And they seem to be available everywhere now.
Stephanie, you muted, there you go.
Just wanted to say, Eliza did order, um, a supply of KN95s, um, specifically for staff that we're waiting for. Um, I do think, you know, that and the surgical masks are a good idea. I just wanna emphasize that an N95 mask, I, you know, I, I get that it is more effective. And I also really feel that it should be reserved for healthcare workers. And, um, you know, it's not just you get an N95 mask, individuals need to be fit-tested for it. And, you know, as we learned with just getting our nursing staff done before school resumed this year is, we had to buy a lot of different brands of masks to actually find a fit for everyone. Um, and unfortunately, you know, I have a, a box of N95s.
And unfortunately, you know, I have a box of N95s that didn't fit anyone except for one per diem sub. So, you know, the masks we have the most amount of only fit one person. So it's really a kind of trial and error in the fitting process, and I think that would quickly, if we were getting staff fitted to wear a new N95 every day, would surpass your pooled testing budget.
Do you feel okay about the KN95s, though? Because I agree with the N95s, that should be for health staff.
Yeah, I think, you know, the KN95s are more effective at filtering and, you know, like Julianne said, making sure people are changing them frequently if they need to, if they're getting moist, making sure there are multiple layers and really focusing on the fit of the mask, that, you know, the nose and the mouth are fully covered, there's no gaping area on the side, and just really focusing on unfit, I think, is important too. But yeah, surgical and KN95s would be reasonable for staff especially.
Now, the N95s, you can barely understand when you're trying to communicate with someone, so they're miserable to talk through. So I don't think that's a good option at all for our teachers unless a nurse is working with a really sick kiddo. That's the opportunity there, I think. And then encouraging like fun glasses would be great if we want to start encouraging fun glasses if the variant starts creeping into our community. That's another safety measure, like let's get some glasses on everyone if, you know, I think that would be helpful to protect the eyes.
Superintendent Sullivan?
Yeah, well, I was just about to ask Ms. Rooks about, about whether or not we should be encouraging glasses, so.
I can speak to that a little bit, sure. Well, it still is not going to change the definition of a close contact, but it's another miss, right, another risk mitigation strategy, just like what Julianne is saying. I mean, we, we use face shields for people who also can't tolerate wearing masks just as an additional protective layer. I mean, it does help to decrease transmission because we know that COVID-19 is transmitted either through respiratory, sorry, via respiratory droplets, either through, you know, your nose and mouth or through your eyes. So, you know, it can provide an additional layer of protection, and I think it could, you know, it's probably a lot to ask students to wear glasses, but maybe you're right, maybe if community transmission does increase or there's an increased prevalence of that variant spreading in schools, it would be an additional safety or risk mitigation strategy that might help.
Thanks.
Okay, sensing a pause in discussion right at the moment, I think, I think we've kind of already touched on the last item that we have is the discussion related to lifting the six-foot policy in place in August. I'll pause for ten seconds in the event that there's a committee member that wants to make a motion.
Well, after, after we got it read, I will.
Okay.
I just think we need more data.
Yeah.
Okay. We need to know more.
Hearing no motion, I don't want to interfere with Roberts' rules of order because Sergeant at Arms will get upset with me, and he just returned. There you go.
Keep a careful eye on you, don't worry.
I think the, our, I think we continue the dialogue about when do we, if ever, which we will, move from the six-foot rule down to our next meeting. I would just say from my own point of view, I'm not sure what the solution needs to be. The, assuming the pandemic continues, I think the only other option is a twenty-million-dollar override for the town, which equates to an extra three hundred dollars per property owner to build a secondary school so that we can spread our kids out and maintain the six-foot rule. I don't see that passing, so.
Says three hundred bucks?
I'm just, no, I just made that up. You'd have to contact the town treasurer, Jennifer Hibbert.
It's like, I'll give you three hundred bucks. That's fine.
Austin was all in on that.
Every year for the next twenty years, Austin, but all I'm saying, we have our square footage, we know what our restrictions are, we know that the intent of the school committee is to get back to pre-pandemic education, right? Which is the six-inch rule, so to speak. How do we do that? We need to continue our dialogue. I appreciate and welcome the Board of Health's input tonight. You know, I know, I know that we all have busy lives and giving up an hour and forty-five minutes on a Friday night is nothing easy.
Can I make a motion regarding that specific Friday night? Can we motion to consider having these meetings on Thursday nights instead?
Second.
Well, I'm okay with that, but I will leave that to Superintendent Sullivan and Mrs. Foss as to whether or not they feel they can get the district-wide community dashboard out at a timely manner on Thursday nights so certain committee members could enjoy their ski weekends.
We could always meet on Saturday instead.
Then I think they'll...
I think that's a step down.
Yeah, it's six o'clock. By then, unless the state is having a problem, we could, I think we could do that.
Okay, so if, if no one has an objection, do we want to move next week's to Thursday at six fifteen?
Yes, please.
Yes, please.
Okay. All right, so our next regular scheduled meeting will be Wednesday, February twenty-fourth, that's the week after school vacation, and that'll be our regular meeting. But our next special meeting will be next Thursday, I don't know the date in front of me, the eleventh, February eleventh at six fifteen in lieu of our Friday night meeting. Hearing nothing?
Okay, sounds wonderful.
Then I will accept a motion to adjourn.
Some moved.
Second.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. This concludes the joint meeting of the Southampton Local School Committee and the Southampton Board of Health. The time is six forty-six, it is February fifth.
Have a good weekend, everyone.
Thank you.